Been there for thirteen hours a week.
Right.
Ran up to seventy something thousand dollars.
We scored this, U P Q B scored it. And it came out at fifty-two and we had to adjust it.
Fifty hour, fifty-three hours a week. It was close to seventy something, seventy-six.
Right, but this is gonna be a forty hour week.
Take this home and look at it.
Would this be a forty hour week and then?
Well, I mean.
Overtime or whatever. They don't do it salary, so it's not.
Well, I mean.
Useful form for us.
We have to.
We can write on.
I agree, we have to look at this.
It's easy to correct.
And see how it fits into what we have right now. Because if we put somebody in there and say it's thirty-four hours a week. And currently we're now, we're paying for fifty-three to seventy hours a week. I mean, this is just guessing. Um, we just wiped out some of our coverage without realizing it. So we need to make sure they're, they're on the same par as what we have.
Right.
As far as coverage, you know. Yes, I expect.
The typical fire chief, what, how many hours do they work a week?
Well, in the current contract that was, uh, that was in effect, uh, in the past was forty hours plus thirteen hours a week for other hours. You know, it was an average of fifty-three hours a week. I believe that was the contract was built on that.
Can I, um, Ms. Brown?
I just wanted to suggest about education. It could, um, desire, um, require some college to bachelor.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Required.
That could, that's a good idea. So some, so that could be a year or two.
So you could be an associate, apply.
Right, that's good.
For running uses.
How, how about this as an action plan? We've looked at this for the first time in a long time. Reggie's gonna call Norwood and see if we can borrow the, their job description. If we can, then she'll change it or draft it into some sort of form that hard copy that we can then come back and make any, look at again and make any changes on it and approve it for the final time. The question I have next is, what are we gonna pay this person?
Well, we currently have a salary range and I think we should stay with it.
Well, I agree too, but, but the salary range that Hyde was getting was after six years.
But if a person comes in.
Are we gonna start this person?
Was he here six years?
Yeah.
Two thousand and six.
Do you wanna send a letter to the fire chiefs?
I thought he only had one or two contracts, everything was acting or.
Well, one was just kept going and going, we didn't decide.
Well, what was his salary at the end, I guess is the question.
Seventy.
Seventy-six, I think.
And it wasn't that at the beginning?
No.
So my question to you is, are we gonna start the new person?
Well, have a range.
Well, that's what I'm looking.
Have a range.
What is the range? What is the range?
Well, I think, could we, cause I can't just pick a number because I wanna overshoot blah, 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 but I, I think, could we talk to the Fire Chiefs Association? Or could we get some information on other pay ranges for?
Yeah, we can do, we can do the survey that's in one of the drawers.
And then sort of. Yeah, and that way gives us sort of ballpark, so we're just not picking names.
Yeah, but I, I would suggest that we put this out as a range.
Yes, oh, definitely a range.
As a range.
Depending on experience, education, and other qualities. And whether or not they're pleasant or not.
They're pleasing.
Pleasing.
All right.
Now, is it still gonna be forty hours?
No.
Oh.
No, I don't want forty hours. I want at least a minimum of fifty-three hours of what we have now in the contract.
Well, we have to watch out about running afoul of a fair waiver of law, as I guess.
Well, that's when we get a lawyer.
I mean, I would say.
It's a salary position.
It's a salary position, so it shouldn't be any.
It's not hourly, so.
Right, so you don't have to set.
We've got a possibility to cover under that salary position.
Right, so that's why, you know, I, I would say you don't put forty and you don't put fifty-three, it's whatever hours it takes to do the job.
I'm just telling you what you agreed to in the past.
Yeah, I know, and that was a mistake.
I think that was a mistake too, but.
Full-time or part-time?
Salary position is whatever it takes to do the job.
So a full-time, full-time salary position.
All right.
And so what are we gonna do for the salary range, Michael?
I think we should think about it.
We think, we're gonna come back and do this again, we're gonna come back.
We're gonna get some information on it.
Right. We're gonna try, we're gonna try and do a survey for the towns. In similar towns, get an idea what their salary is. And then we're gonna come back with a hard copy and do this. I mean, this has been the most, we've never focused on this since.
Right, for a long time.
For a long time.
Two thousand and five.
Yes. All right. I hate to do this to you, but it is now eight o'clock and we do need to move on to town administrator.
Can I just say one last thing about the fire chief?
You may.
Fire chief, well, does it need to be in the contract or is it sort of?
It's our bylaw.
It's our bylaw. We'd have to go to a town meeting to undo it.
Okay.
Anybody see the Gazette this morning about South Hadley talking about a, oh, never mind, never mind. They were talking about changing their government structure.
Yeah, they've been happening at four or five different times now.
Reggie, where's the, your, the?
Their personnel.
Personnel, that's where it was?
Okay.
All right.
So they're also here, three.
Which one are you looking at?
Two twelve.
S B administrative or a town administrator?
Town administrator.
Town administrator.
So it's two twelve.
About two thousand and twelve.
Did you guys change it when I wasn't on the board? Did you change anything?
No, we haven't really.
There's only one, um, recommendation that was made by the board back before you and Ed came on was changing the required bachelor's to preferred.
I thought they had to have a masters.
Masters, yeah, right.
Minimum qualifications. I mean, the top was drafted by a committee, the, the duties and job description were drafted by a committee many, I don't even remember who.
I was on it.
You weren't?
I was on it, Dave Solano was on it, Pat Monahan was on it, Fitzgerald was on it, and I think John Martin was on it.
Which one are we looking at, two thousand and eight one or?
Two thousand and twelve. There's one.
First one?
Yeah, one of, page one of eighteen.
Cause it's two drafts in here, it's multiple.
I think two thousand and twelve is the most recent one.
Yeah, it is, but they're the same, there's nothing.
There's nothing different other than the minimum qualifications. So, I mean, I don't, does anybody have a problem with the job description of town administrator?
I don't have a problem with the job description.
So the only thing we need to.
I just have, um, my own, my own concerns is the qualifications.
As it stands now, the job qualif, this, so this two thousand and twelve one, does this have, this? This one still has the, the bachelor's degree required.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's, we voted to change that.
Preferred.
Right after Diana left, I think.
It says suggested.
No, no, I don't think we voted on anything.
It says bachelor's degree, business, government, yada, 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 fully approved as, or university, suggested, doesn't say required.
Mine says required.
It says a little asterisk next to it.
On four ten twelve, the select board voted to remove required and replace with suggested, but I'm not trying to be a stick.
That was out in there.
No, it's. Did we ever approve those minutes?
Um, that's in your packet.
All right.
Who's required? What? Where is that?
There's two of them.
Oh.
You're way down there.
Yeah. Now, look at this. It's not just that.
It's okay.
I don't like this.
Mary has the flipper at home and she must probably.
Hard copy here for one.
I'm gonna be throwing this thing in just a while and then, and it just skipped again.
I'm not sure.
So if those minutes weren't not approved, April of two thousand and twelve?
No, they weren't.
No, they're in your packet tonight.
We took the vote, we never forgot the minutes done.
Well, let's find them.
Knowledge of relevant messages or.
These are in order, right?
The minutes?
Yeah.
Yes. Newest.
Not even negotiate contracts.
The oldest.
Oh, okay.
High level stuff. It's not here to be.
It's gonna be who's a, who.
I was, it was like, it's gonna be Ann and you basically.
And Jackie, I think.
I can do that either.
Yeah, if Jackie, let me just find it, if Jackie's surprised, we just called her name.
What's that?
About the minute, we have minutes.
Yeah, but we can vote our, according to Reggie.
Right.
What's that?
Council said, other board members may vote, if you were not present, you may vote on the minute.
Yeah, but, so all you're voting is whether the minutes are accurate or not, though.
Right.
You're not.
Right, you're not redoing the.
You can't redo them, you can only vote whether they're accurate or not.
Right.
All right, so what, what, was it April or May?
April.
April what day?
Twelve.
Ten.
All right, uh, I don't have them.
It's not just the educational requirement. This is written at that level too. These skills are written at that level. So if you decide to change the educational requirement, you also have got to tone down these requirements because employee must possess mediation, conflict resolution, leadership skills, blah, 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 blah.
Mm-hmm. You're saying you can't have that without a diploma?
I'm not saying, don't, ability to negotiate contracts, agreements, and appropriate working arrangements, um, ability to develop workman's, okay, knowledge of development.
April, April is not in here. April tenth is not in here. April second is, but April tenth is not.
You know, you're right, April tenth was already approved, I'm sorry. It was April second that I was thinking of.
All right.
Ability to supervise department heads, um, I mean, you'd have to change the job description, not just, not just the bachelor's degree requirement, to supervise department heads. I mean, that's a, that's a major.
But that's, that's.
I'm not saying that, you know, that can't be done.
Did Diane supervise department heads?
No.
No. Well, we have it in here.
What happens is that, that, that some of the department managers are elected officials. So they just do what they want.
Well, then we shouldn't put it in there if the town administrator can't supervise.
But then the D O R wants us to have the town treasurer and the town clerk appointed instead of elected, that way you just pick somebody based on skill set. And if the town clerk and town, town treasurer were appointed, they would be under the supervision of the town administrator. And that was the thinking. But I got shut down at annual town meeting because we were taking away their.
Ability to direct the work of professionals, so, I mean.
Ann, I don't see why someone without a degree can't do those things. What makes the degree?
Has mediation, conflict resolution, leadership skills.
Why do you think that mediation, someone can't mediate without a degree? I think degrees are overrated myself, personally.
Well, this whole, we, we have this conversation every time, every time, about educational level, and you always wanna make it, these are highly, then rewrite it.
It's a very skilled job, I don't have to say that, but I'm just saying what makes a, a diploma required to mediate a case or mediate at anything? You, I mean.
I don't know.
I don't, that's my point.
Because that's a high level skill to mediate, be a good mediator.
My, my comment is.
And most people don't come by it naturally.
My comment is, is that we're looking for a person that has been educated to a certain level, that has the expertise, the core of an education to bring forward these jobs to a better level, a higher level. A level that we as leaders can look at and say, it's been done. This, this, this person has been educated, we expect them to do jobs at this particular level, we expect it done at that level. And that, I agree with Ann, that, um, education is a factor in this job description that we should adhere to.
But I, I do understand the argument about the degree itself. You could have, um, ten or fifteen years of municipal experience in other, um, towns and have gained this experience. Yes, without.
Yes, if, if you were at that same consist, consistent level at those other towns. But being a clerk and being an administrator is a different thing.
So, I mean, I understand the argument that, no, you don't have to have a degree to possess these types of skills. You can have experience and, and be a, you know, and obtain this, but you can't just have no, I don't know, so.
We're gonna interview the candidates, and if they don't have a degree, but yet, look, they have all these qualifications.
Exactly.
You don't wanna exclude them.
Here's where we are right now. We, we actually have, evidently, in April, the select board amended the job.
Does anybody remember doing that?
Sign up. We, in April, we amended the job qualifications.
I wasn't here.
No.
No, he was, only three of us were here.
Right.
And I don't think, I probably abstained, we, so that means.
But, but what, the official vote is that that's been removed. All I'm trying to set is, is set the procedural position we're in.
Yeah.
As of right now, the position does not require a bachelor's degree. So if you wanna change that, someone's gotta do something affirmative to make it a change.
But it is replaced with suggested.
Suggested, and I'm not gonna.
I would, um, to respond to your, just based on what Mr. Ed had to say, that it's not necessary to have a bachelor's degree or master's degree to prove that the person has the capability to do the job. I know I have worked with Mr. Lucier and with Reggie, and I know that, you know, they, she has been handling this position very well. I don't know her personal, professional profile, but, uh, based on the education that she has, like I said, I, I ignore it, but, uh, based on what she has, she's a proven person that has been holding a position like that, quite literally down towards career education and then up, like such as, I mean, uh, education require some college associates, I mean, a, a, a applied associate's degree, or some college education require, you know, to, uh, desire to a bachelor's degree. So that way is, um, many of candidates, they do have, um, they, an associate of some college towards a bachelor's degree, but they yet have not completed it. And, and, you know, based on that salary ranges, you say negotiable, let's say fifty to seventy degrees of negotiable, towards experience and education, that's when you're bargaining with salaries. And I'm just telling you, I'm from experience from working from Department of Labor. And, um, the VA system, the federal government, that's how they bargain with salaries.
Well, our bylaw.
Thank you.
Just a comment on what she said, our bylaws, when we, when we look at scoring the position, we score a position higher for wages if they have a degree, uh, that's required, it gets scored higher, um, for finances. If they don't have a degree, it, it doesn't work in the same manner.
Mm-hmm.
When we score these jobs.
All right, I wanna, I wanna come back to keep, try and keep this thing moving. Right now, the qualifications are as, without the required degree. Does anybody wanna make a motion to change that? Hearing no motion, do we wanna post the position as the qualifications are done?
So moved.
Keep going.
I'm, I'm having trouble with the words right now.
Who knows? It's okay, but you're moving.
I'm trying to get, we wanna, do we wanna post the job description with the qualifications as they're enumerated, with not requiring a degree?
But suggested.
But suggesting a degree.
Or some, some.
College.
Some education.
I would say that this job description.
Yeah, some college.
I would make a motion to post the job position using this job description.
And the qualifications.
Yeah, well, that's in the job description.
I second that motion.
All right, just moving forward.
Any further discussion?
I, just for discussion purposes, I believe we need a degree.
When the candidates, when the candidates.
I believe, my comment is, we need an educational process here, that we have a position that is supposed to be working for the board.
I still agree with you.
That should have a degree. You, you know, I, I really feel that education at this point is a key factor to making sure we get the best possible candidates. Not that other people that are serving that position are not a good candidate, just that we need have a level of expertise to carry this position to the next level, and we're not there yet.
Right.
The level that's being advertised, we need to have educated people.
But Ed, when we, when the selection process goes through, then you'll be able to pick out what, how you want, who you want to interview.
Except that the job description draws in the candidates based on their self-selection, you will not necessarily. I mean, who's gonna apply to a job that you don't need a degree in? I mean, that doesn't bring in the highest level folks. Cause they know they're not gonna be paid.
The people, the people who apply for this job are gonna know what a town administrator does. They're gonna know Dave Nixon, they're gonna know Diane Shender.
What? State, no.
All right.
It cannot work like that. It's a state, if it's, if it's out there as a state, they don't know any of those people.
All right, we got a, we got a motion, we've had our discussion, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
No.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
One opposed, one abstain. Now, are we gonna post this with a salary?
You have to vote then.
I, I did.
You did vote.
I did, it's three to two.
So it's three to two.
I didn't make myself clear. Um, so we're gonna post this with a salary range now?
Whatever the current salary range is.
Why don't you just say the national?
No, I think we, I'm not positive, but I believe, as we're Mr. Powell, we have to put a dollar amount out there.
Oh, we do.
I, I believe that's so.
Reggie's standing yes?
Yes, you need a dollar.
You do.
All right, what was Diana's last salary?
Sixty-seven.
What was her first?
The job was scored at fifty-four, fifty-two.
Correct.
The first contract that she signed was at fifty-eight. Under national law, section forty-one, one oh eight, and the town administrators, town accountants, um, and there's one other, do not have to follow under the personnel bylaw, the select board can choose whatever wage.
All right, what, so give, give me that again, what was it? It was, she, it was scored at fifty-four.
Yeah, she started at fifty-eight.
She started at fifty-eight.
And ended at sixty-seven.
Huh? And ended at sixty-seven?
So why don't we put down fifty, fifty-four to?
How many, how many years was she?
Four.
Four?
But she's still under the.
Oh, yeah, you guys are good to her.
No, but I think she's still under the median town administrators.
Um, my, my recommendation on the salary is, if it was scored at fifty-four, that should be our low range. And what do we have currently in the budget?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-four to sixty or fifty-four to sixty-two?
I'm just saying, currently, our, our, our budget is fifty-eight.
But if you wanna bring in that hired candidate, you.
I would say sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
It's a range.
Well, then, let's be, while we're talking about that, then, let's, let's also make sure that we cover that range in next year's budgetary.
Well, I mean, she's putting the budget together, hopefully that's done beforehand.
But we, I, I, I hate putting salaries down because you know what people are gonna ask for.
Yeah, but it's all predicated on experience and education.
All right, so, so what's our range? Give me, somebody say the range.
Fifty-four thousand to sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven to fifty.
Don't screw him up anymore, he is.
I mean, that just seems like a big, I, I, and I, I don't have a problem with it, it just seems like a big range. Fifty-four to sixty-six.
All right, fifty-four to sixty-five.
Fifty-five to sixty-five.
Whatever you guys want, I'm, I'm, I'm lost here, I'm not sure what the right thing is.
But it's a range, and it's, it's, it can be negotiated.
I don't think we should put down a set fee because I think we're just hurting ourselves. I think we should have a range.
I think the range.
So we can.
I think we should have a range in mind.
How about fifty-four to fifty-eight?
Can we ask an, an expert out here? What typically for municipal jobs, do you put, in the job description, do you put the range or do you put negotiable or?
Like, again, it's, uh, it starts with a, a range, it's a range.
Yeah.
And it is like usually bargaining, here is your, some indication. And my suggestion was that it, it is, yes, I can see his suggestion of, of holding on.
It's hard to hear, we knew all the talking.
I can't believe we gave her ten thousand dollars in maybe in four years.
Something like that, because our, our associate's degree for some college.
Yes.
For bachelor's desire.
Fifty-four to fifty-eight.
But you decided, you are not saying it's a requirement.
Right.
But it is a.
Whatever you guys decide, I'm just, I, I frankly am trying to hold the number down.
Right, and at this point, we just have that as suggested.
Yeah, but the company says you're gonna draw a candidate.
Minimum, you know, start.
She started off that first year.
Right, so you think, you think it's okay to have it actually in the job announcement, what the range is?
Yes.
Fifty-four to sixty?
That's what you said.
Right, then they, they bargain depending on their education experience to the top end or the bottom end or whatever. When most people try to.
So Mike, how about we have a range fifty-four thousand to sixty-two thousand as a start to put on the job description and then we'll go with them.
Did he go up two thousand dollars?
But we have sixty-seven thousand in the budget because Diane had that.
We don't have.
No, the new budget's only fifty-eight thousand.
Oh, it's only fifty.
And this, the other thing is, depending on when you guys are gonna hire this person, what, what's the difference if you go to a higher level, where are we at with the budget? Cause I'm at forty-five, so it's thirteen thousand dollar difference, so.
And, and I understand your, you went up two thousand dollars as you walked behind me.
Fifty-four to sixty-two.
Fifty-two.
Did he say sixty-two?
Oh, all right.
Another definition that they always put is a starting salary, and that's your bottom line, and then when you are progressing, they go.
Yeah, but that ties your hand, that ties your hands up if you've got somebody really qualified with a lot of experience that can stop and do the job.
You gonna do the motion?
I did it. Fifty-four to sixty-two.
The suggested motion for salary range is fifty-four to sixty-two, is there any second or further discussion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so are we gonna, what's the next logical step to post that position?
Can we advertise it, put it in?
Where are you gonna advertise it?
I would advertise it in, first of all, we have to put in a lot, local paper for two, um, two weeks currently, at minimum of one per week for two consecutive weeks. Now, you're not gonna draw that much in a local paper, that's my suggestion.
Say that again, could you say that?
Our bylaw says when you post a position, you gotta run it for two consecutive weeks, minimum one day one week and one day the next week, but it gotta be two consecutive weeks. two consecutive weeks. You can run seven days and, or fourteen days straight for that two weeks, but you're obligated to run it for two weeks, at least one ad in each week. Okay? But I also think that mass municipal should get it, but they're expensive. Reggie told me, right?
Yes, they are.
They're expensive. Um, there are professional municipal organizations that will pick this up on, on the wire and advertise it, just to promote their, their stuff. So I would say advertise it in the union, advertise it in the local Hampshire Gazette, and, in mass municipal.
Right.
Even though it's going to cost us a lot of money there, I think we should.
How much will it cost?
That's what we're going to draw the people in, Ed.
I think you're going to spend between the three papers, well over five hundred dollars.
If I can make a suggestion, what we've been doing is putting just the basics where town administrator posting wage, go to town webpage for additional information.
That's what Norwood did for the fire chief.
That's good.
And, and on the bylaw, and I, it's good to do twice, but in the bylaw, it doesn't say consecutive. We've always done it where you post it once in a span of two weeks, fourteen days prior to closing.
Yeah, but we were trying to make an obligation that is required, that we run it two different weeks. You can run it on a Friday and a Monday.
I'm just reading the bylaw. That's all I'm saying.
So we'll do it that way. We'll do it two, two times, two consecutive weeks. Do we have money somewhere to post this?
It's not in your budget.
It comes on the Select Board.
That's what I'm saying. Do we have money in the Select? Okay. All right. And how much budget do you want to spend?
Well, my suggestion is, you've got to run it in two papers. Try to know how much that is.
I think you should put it in that mass municipal, because people will be looking.
But, but the problem was with that, it comes out monthly. Am I right?
Correct.
It doesn't come out weekly. It comes out monthly. If we miss the printing stage, we won't see it for two months.
But you can, you can send it to their website, have it posted on the website, and that's different. You don't even have to put it in the paper.
Oh. I'm part of STEM, MMA, MMMA. I can just send it out to the members, so that they can put it out there as well. Like, we all talk to each other.
Okay. That sounds good.
All right. Done. That's done. So the fire chief, when we're going to come back and revisit.
Correct.
Is there anything else on those job descriptions that we need to do?
No.
All right. Because I, there's a form here that we need to sign for the tax, the tax, whatever, tax classification that we did last time.
Are we going to sign all of those licenses?
Yeah.
That's why you.
There's two more items.
Okay.
Superintendent Jurgensen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, you, you and I talked about this. Superintendent?
Well, this is a separate one for the others. He received, and if I can pass it to you.
Yeah.
Single text.
Yeah, we don't have enough business to...
From Superintendent Jurgensen, on the school roof, there is a line item in the MSBA budget template that allows for a budget allocation for owner's insurance. That would typically be for a builder's risk type of policy. We sometimes see the owner purchase a rider on existing property insurance during construction for a loss, fire, storm, whatever. Uh, may not be covered by existing property. We are looking for a budget for this item if the town intends to purchase additional insurance. We'd like to know the budget number by Thursday.
Well, question I have is, they, is this for us to carry additional insurance for the contractors who have to carry insurance anyways?
This is an owner's policy.
Okay.
On existing property during the construction for a loss like fire, storm, that causes damage to the construction underway, that may not be covered by existing property insurance. That should go out for a bid. Did you call?
No, but he, I'm just trying to find the other email, but he, the person, Bob, had sent a second email saying, I want to let you know, most of the communities have opted not to purchase insurance.
I think we are, frankly, from my personal side, I would send this out to our insurance agent. Ask, and did they give us a quote?
He said it was hard to tell.
Well, can't we ask Jurgensen to check with, when they put this out to bid, to require the contractor to carry additional insurance to cover this? Because this is the work that he's performing.
Yeah. Well, here's our isn't saying, he don't know.
No.
So Craig said most places aren't buying?
Right. They opted not to. No, Mr. Jurgensen didn't say that. The, the...
The clerk who works?
No, yes. Yep.
Who's that? Reinhardt?
Robert Poytryst.
Okay. I'd like to know why we have to carry a rider for construction on a building, that the contractor should be carrying it. I'm...
Did we have a rider on this building when it was rehabbed?
No. We have regular insurance.
If you purchase a rider on existing property insurance during a construction for a loss like a fire or a storm, that causes damage to the construction underway, why wouldn't that be covered by the building insurance? Once it's attached to the building?
Well, if you remember, when we had our flood back there in the Council on Aging, um, the contractor had insurance, but he opted not to do it. He went after the contractor. I don't know how he, he ever got paid on any of that, but our insurance never paid on that.
Yeah. But because the contractor was liable for it.
I'm sure he put a claim in. But I, I mean, I don't want to put the town in jeopardy. I mean, wouldn't, I would think the contractor would have to carry some kind of liability insurance for his product.
Right. And then once it's attached to our building, it's, maybe I'll talk to Craig.
Yeah. Why is he asking this at this time? Would be my question.
And who is asking?
Because you got, I'm, I'm sure what happened was...
You have to sign it, Mike.
No, they're putting the, the documents together. They need to have everything checked off before they go. And this is a checkoff.
Okay.
All right. So I'll talk to him. What do you, what's the board's pleasure? Just tell him to get the contractor to cover it?
Well, first of all, I'd like to know, yeah, I'd like to see the contractor cover it, as you call. Maybe he's, he's not able to call. You want me to call?
Yeah, because you know more about that stuff than I do. Um, did, but he also had a, did Craig wanted to know about town meeting for the...
Yes, that was the other item.
Um, because we have to vote on that roof repair at town meeting to take the money, the, to bond the other one point something, one something.
We've got to bond the whole thing and get reimbursed? I'm not sure.
I don't either.
I thought I read that. We had to bond the whole thing and then get reimbursed. You want me to talk to Jurgensen about that?
Well, he, we need to set up a town meeting date by some date. I can't remember.
How about when we get free cash?
I talked with both Vicki and I, and they both recommended at the end of July, beginning of February, if you have to do another special town meeting.
January, February, that's all right.
January, okay.
No, no, you said July.
End of, oh, sorry.
January, right?
End of January, beginning of February.
February.
Yeah. Because I'd like to hopefully have the budget and the wages established by then too, to go to town meeting and free cash established.
Did, did we get it, the file number on that?
No. There was a ballpark number, but, um...
Does he need that? I don't remember whether he said he has to have that now.
Sorry. It took me a while.
Yeah, there is.
Oops. Sorry, I did.
On Thursday, the twenty-ninth, Reinhardt sent a, the completed roof repair estimate to our owner's project manager. During the conference call the same day, the need for some corrections, adjustments were identified. Uh, I will send, right now, the board estimate for the roof is approximately, get ready, hold on to your chairs, one point four million dollars with fifty-five percent reimbursement. The cost to Southampton will be approximately six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Both the OPM and architect have asked, what is the date for town meeting to fund the project? The date submitted in the proposed project schedule was April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. OPM are, and advocate, and architect are advocating for an earlier vote so they can move the contract and starting date forward. The architect will be ready to bid the project thirty days after MSBA approval on January thirtieth. Both OPM and architect believe acting earlier will save Southampton money by getting the project lined up earlier with contractors who work increases in the summer.
I agree with that.
Does the Select Board approve the architects working on construction documents prior to MSBA approval? This could also depress, decrease cost to Southampton. I guess there's two questions. Um, wow, how many of these licenses have we signed? Um, does the Select Board approve the architects working on the construction documents prior to MSBA approval?
Are they, they're not within scope that we just authorized, right?
No.
They're beyond the scope.
Beyond the scope. It'd be your working...
How much will it cost?
It's going to be percentage of the total construction.
I see.
Hmm.
Is that sort of abnormal?
No. What they're, what they're saying is, they want to be in position to get it out there, so we can start construction of that roof to last the first day that's open for summer vacation and get it done at a time in there. But I'm talking about the documents.
Right. But they're talking about going before. They're talking about getting Collins to let them start the repair before school's out.
But they, yeah, toward the end. But that's what they're trying to do, is get the bulk of it done, get the contractor done ahead of time. And they want to be in position to do that. And that's what they're saying. We need to do that now.
Am I understanding?
It's a good idea.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea.
I just don't know what they're going to talk about, because there's no dollars attached to it.
So do we definitely got this grant or not?
We, I believe we do have the grant.
Yeah, we have the fifty.
We have the fifty-five percent.
Otherwise, we couldn't.
But we don't have the authorization from the town for the six fifty.
And how are we going to do the six fifty? We going to bond this?
Of course you do. This is long term. And we need the town to approve it.
So we need, we have, you need, we, we have two issues again. Do we?
Oh, my God. You guys have been harping on that in this before. I thought we did it too.
I think they're printing them at the other end of the table.
We have a stamp.
For the town of South Hampton, we just keep, you know, different towns.
It does say Southampton and Southwood, unless...
I'm getting, like, dizzy.
All right. We got the two questions. Do you want to approve the...
And you think it's okay to go forward without?
I think it's prudent.
Okay.
I just don't know how much it's going to cost, and I think we should ask for a number from Jurgensen, what it's going to cost.
Can we do that? Just so we...
Because, I mean, this is something that would be covered on the next step, but they're saying if we get, in our ducks in a row, we're going to be ahead of the game.
Special town meeting, set that up end of January, and then get a number from Jurgensen regarding how much this is going to cost.
But it doesn't really, it's going to cost what it's going to cost.
I know, but, um, we, we can't spend money we don't know about. That's my feeling. If, if it's going to be, say it's going to be seven thousand dollars. I'm not too worried about it. If it's going to be thirty thousand dollars, that's going to be an impact on everybody.
Yeah.
Well, that would be for that, would be for cash.
I have a budget for that.
Right.
But aren't they going to have to spend this at some point anyway?
If you get the approval for the six fifty to build the roof, this would be part of the construction documents.
Yeah, that's the problem. That's, therein lies the problem. Maybe I just grasped it myself. If we approve them working on the documents...
And then we don't...
And the town doesn't vote the six fifty, that money we're going to end up owing and not, because remember, the roof's not going to get repaired unless we get six fifty and the, so we right now, pretty much assured, we have the fifty-five percent reimbursement. But if the town, for some reason, doesn't vote our share, the project's gone, and the money we spent to prepare the documents, if we wasted.
Well, then we need to find the figure, but if it's money to prepare the documents, it can't be that much.
I don't think it's a big idea. I think we could say yes to him next week, because he should be able to tell Reinhardt and say, what are we talking for dollars?
Right.
If it's out in the picture, we can say, hey, we can't do it.
Yeah. All right. So what about the town meeting? So that's the next question. Town meeting. What date?
February first, January twenty-something.
Can we?
Excuse me. I have, um, if, when we try to get the money for the roof at the town, okay, the town meeting, should we give a dollar amount to the, to be educate the public more about how much it's going to cost us on a monthly basis if we have to take out a bond?
We have to take a bond off.
There's no question we're taking a bond.
We're taking a bond.
Right. We will, we, we have to, whatever. But if the public knows about how much it's going to cost, and we at least give them more information, they're more apt not to say no, because I don't...
We should know that by that night. We should know.
And I, I think Jurgensen should be in a position to get that stuff, right?
How about January twenty-ninth?
You know what I'm saying?
Right. So, but how do we, you know, convey this information to the public before the meetings?
We'll have a general, we'll have a...
We'll ask Mr. Jurgensen to come down, have informational meetings, and put it out there.
Okay.
All right. He'll have to bring his expertise, his engineers with him, to answer the technical questions. There's going to be a lot of technical questions.
Okay.
We should also know what, what's on the bond, what we're bonded for now, and when those bonds are paid off, so that we'll know that, you know, you'll, yes, you'll see an increase, or no, you won't see an increase, because this is going to replace something else that's coming off.
The other good thing, our time is, borrowing money is really cheap. It doesn't make the sixty, six hundred fifty thousand dollars any less, but it means that we're not paying eight, nine percent interest on, for paying, you know, I mean, right now, two and a half is a reasonable number.
Oh, really? Two and a half?
I'm, I'm saying it right now. It can change in a day.
Mike, I make a motion to have a special town meeting on January twenty-ninth, Tuesday.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
The only thing is, the warrant needs to be signed at least by January eighth, because it's got to be a two-week posting.
Well, we're going to meet January eighth anyway.
But then you got to get the language and everything.
I've got to draft up the lang, I've got to draft up...
Well, but it's getting it right and getting it...
Well, we push it off one more week, is that...
Yeah, so, February fifth to Tuesday.
Did we send your earlier motion?
I already sent.
Pick another day?
Fifth, February two thousand thirteen.
Is there a second? All in favor?
All right.
Aye. All right. Is there anything I missed?
Yes.
What?
Two tables, sorry. Two tables of, um, three or four PCFs.
Yes.
For Mr. Henning, Mr. Kwee, and myself.
Yeah.
Person that is applying.
Somebody.
For somebody else.